7:00 PM on January 24th, 2023.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Nardi, can you do a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Yes.
Here. And do we have recognitions this evening?
Good evening, out of the board members. In May of 2022, Ellen Kreevak applied, interviewed, and was selected as a member of the tech crew for the 2023 Theater Fest All-State Production of Shrek. Students involved in the production rehearsed and prepared throughout the fall semester in preparation for the state production, which was the main event of the 2023 Illinois High School Theater Fest. Every year, the Illinois High School Theater Festival brings together thousands of students from all over the state. Hosted at U of I or ISU, this festival engages students in all things theater, from acting and technical workshops to networking events for aspiring actors and techies. The all-state performance is a highly coveted honor for which students must audition and interview. It is the theater world's version of making state and athletics. So with that said, I would like to honor our all-state theater crew member, Ellen Kreevak.
Don't be shy.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I know the director of the show, and she was very proud, so.
And I would like to thank all the staff members present here who's been involved in instrumental in helping Ellen attain all-state status, Ms. Sarah Johnson. So I'd like to thank Ms. Sarah Johnson.
Congratulations. Are you involved in Greece? I should have asked you while you were up here. Yes, okay.
And that concludes student recognitions.
Thank you. Visitor statements. Do we have any visitor statements for this evening? Anyone here? Are you guys here as SA or as visitor statement?
Yes.
Okay. Visitors from the public first. That's okay. There's five people coming up, and they look prepared, and I've met them all before. Is anyone here from the public for comment? Then we will go ahead and Student Association, thank you. I didn't mean to cause any confusion.
It was all good.
Okay.
First off, we just want to say thank you so much for having us tonight and for letting us present. So this past November, we held our annual Thanksgiving basket drives. It was extremely successful. Lots of other clubs were involved, whether they donated an entire basket, items, or money for us to buy items or gift cards. The baskets consisted of all the fixings for a Thanksgiving meal, and even included gift cards to places like Jewel or Target for families to buy turkeys of their own. These baskets were donated to CSS, or Community Support Services, a facility that helps people with intellectual disabilities. A lot of our former Bulldogs who transitioned out of the program here at RB do end up at CSS. One of our own exec board members, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, her brother, goes to CSS, so it affects us all very personally. In so, in summation, these baskets helped provide families with Thanksgiving meals when they could not afford one on their own. Thank you very much.
We also had the coat and blanket drive mid-December to early December. This year, we had a total of 447 items. This included 82 coats, both children and adults, 36 blankets, and tons of hats, scarves, gloves, and much more. We had a lot of SA come and help with us one Thursday morning. It was so rewarding to see all of the tons of bags of stuff people have donated. It was insane. All of these items were donated to the Salvation Army, and we helped a total of 155 families this year, which is super great. And we've had this tradition for many years before this, and we hope to keep it up. Another tradition that we're going to start is a trivia night in February during the week of the Winter Dance to kind of kick off after the pep rally. This will take place Wednesday, February 15th, from 7:00 to 8:30. Last year, we held this, but we didn't get a lot of participation with an SA, so we're going to open it to the whole school, and hopefully, students with either groups of friends can come with other clubs, or they can participate individually. And we'll be holding sign-ups February 9th during all lunches, and hopefully in the morning as well, so that students can come up with their friends, or, like I said, individually and sign up to participate in trivia night. So yeah, should be really fun.
Also, this quarter, we will be continuing our monthly Spirit Fridays. So we do this every month, just so we can raise school spirit and just have a little fun, bring some positivity. So basically, SA, we mainly pick it, but we take ideas from students and all of SA in general, and we pick like a theme dress-up day for everyone to dress up on one Friday in a month. This Friday is actually our first one of the year. We're doing just a traditional classic Bulldog blue and white, just to get it started for this year, and it's counted in our six-hour classes. So the teachers, at the beginning of their sixth hour, will count how many students participated, and then the classes, the top three classes with the most participation are rewarded candy. So it's just kind of a fun way to raise school spirit, and we will continue to do that for the rest of the year. But in February, we are changing it up just a little bit, and we're doing a whole spirit week, because this year, we are doing the Winter Dance again. I'm sure you might have seen some signs around the halls. We're calling it "Snow Coming." We haven't done, like, we did one other Winter Formal, and that was in March of 2020. So it was literally one week before everything shut down, and like, we've only done it once, but still, all students always talk about it, and so everyone's really excited. And that's on February 17th. It's a Friday. We have an institute day that day, so the dance is from 6:00 to 9:00 in the fieldhouse, and it should be a lot of fun.
Yes, and along with that, we're also in the process of planning our second semester pep rally. This will take place the week of the Winter Dance as well, on Tuesday, February 14th, and it will most likely be Valentine's Day themed. And we are hoping for just some more like staff participation in our pep rally, and we just want to promote school spirit as much as possible. And yeah, we want to change up the pep rally a little bit. We want to have some new games, some new people coming down to do our games, and we're also going to get some performances from some new groups.
We had our last blood drive on November 1st and collected 38 pints of blood, which saves 114 lives. We are doing another one on February 22nd, and we hope to get even more volunteers to donate blood for that day. We will be doing sign-ups during all lunches to get students involved, and we hope to get even more pints of blood, so we can save even more lives.
So we have for you tonight?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you. That's a really robust presentation. Any comments or questions from anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
There's no president's report. Superintendent's report.
General district update. Tonight's school perceptions will present data from the Communication Survey that was disseminated in the fall. Recommendations for three of the four divisional positions have been brought to the board for approval. Humanities is being presented tonight to the board, so second round interviews for the career and tech ed position are scheduled for next week, with a recommendation being brought to the board in February. The first day of second semester was Monday, January 9th. We used a late start schedule. This came out of the Culture and Operations Committee, which I previously discussed with the board. This concept, the feedback from the students and staff was very positive on having a late start schedule on the first day back from a break. So this will be our new practice at the start of each semester, when we return from a break, such as summer and winter. The committee is reviewing logistics right now and modifications related to open house for the 23-24 school year, and how we can improve teacher participation and the overall parent experience. So that's something the Culture and Operations Committee is working on this semester. The district is a part of the Displanes Valley Regional Cooperative for Career and Technical Education. Similar to the district to a Board of Education, a focus in the cooperative over the last few years has been an increase in increasing opportunities for students to take dual credit and dual enrollment courses and career pathways at TRIT. These opportunities will be available beginning in the fall of '23. The building administration has done a nice job working with the TRIT staff, advertising and recruiting our current students, juniors and seniors, to enroll in these opportunities, such as Certified Nursing Assistant, Criminal Justice, Welding, Renewable Energy, and Computer Information Systems. Right now, we have about 13 students signed up to take dual enrollment courses, which is a really big step for us for next year at TRIT. And a presentation including our plan to support these students in classes will be provided in March, when Ms. Lindquist and Ms. Augustine bring staffing updates with Dr. Freitas for next school year. In regards to the superintendent advisory councils, no update on curriculum, facilities. There's an advisory council that will convene to review the bids on the HVAC, and that's scheduled, I believe, for February 9th. The Finance Advisory Council is also meeting in February, and that's to review the assumptions of the three-year financial projections. Personnel Advisory Council, no new updates. The Policy Advisory Council, this council met after winter break, and there's recommendations included in tonight's press packet, on tonight's press packet, for review and approval. And no updates on purchase, sale, or lease of land. And that is the superintendent's report for January 24th, 2023.
Were there any questions or comments from anyone before we move on? Dr. Smetana.
Good evening. Tonight, I'll provide the Board of Education with financial information through the month of December, which represents 50% of our fiscal year. I'll begin with the monthly summary report. The total operating revenue for the month was $4,770,972, with 92% coming from property tax, 5% coming from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding, and 2% coming from federal and state reimbursement. The total operating expenditures for the month were $1,998,658, with 84% towards salary and benefits, 5% towards operations and maintenance, and 3% each towards purchase services, transportation, and special education tuition. On the next page is the summary of the fund balances, which shows that the district's operating funds have an overall positive balance. These funds should increase next month in January, once the district receives the remaining amount, majority of the fall property tax collection money. This money will be used to pay bills until spring property tax collection, which we anticipate this year arrive in April and May. Normally, this occurs in March, but that will be slightly delayed this year as well. The summary of our revenue shows that the district has received 27.5% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This amount is much lower to this time last fiscal year, of roughly 49%, again due to the property tax from the fall collection not fully coming in yet. A summary of expenditures shows that the district has spent 51.2% of the budgeted expenditures for the year, and this amount is tracking pretty similar to this time last fiscal year. And then, as always, I've included two reports for the board, the statement of revenues and expenditures for board accounts, as well as the student activity accounts. And then, lastly, I just have an informational item. At the next board meeting, the board will see the bills for our liability insurance, which I had previously brought to the board. We just completed our second year with the Liant for liability insurance, and after a meeting with representatives of the superintendent's sub-advisory council, we were able to secure a better quote, which was about a 12% increase of $143,777. This premium increase is primarily due to the increase of property values for the district, which will result in more coverage, but we are going to receive an assessment before next year's renewal to confirm the recommended full appraisal value by Liberty Mutual. Also, I just want to note, we did purchase additional cyber liability that we discussed at the last board meeting, and this insurance will provide the district with significantly more coverage should something happen. And then, lastly, I'd just like to thank the two members of the sub-advisory council, Ms. Salas and Mr. Durkin, for spending time and making sure we were receiving the best coverage for the best quote possible. And that concludes my report tonight.
Are there any questions? There were none submitted, but are there any from the floor?
Did we transfer back the working cash yet?
We did, but not for debt service, based off of the amount of property tax money that came in.
So we should be coming more whole next month, right?
Yes, I anticipate that.
Thank you.
The board does not need to pass a resolution for that, correct?
No, it happens automatically.
That's what I thought. Okay.
No, no, that's fine. Dr. Freitas.
Good evening, out of the board members again. Here's the principal's report. Under teaching and learning, the Five Essentials survey was facilitated today, and we will continue until we reach the 95% student participation record. As of today, we are at 84%. Previously, we've had about 50% of students participate, so I'm really excited, and we're very close. And again, we have about two months left. 95% is the threshold for any school to receive positive points towards the annual performance designation issued by ISB in the fall. Panorama, our teachers are continuing to use Panorama Dashboard individually and in PLCs with our data to inform their practice, and our current freshman-on-track rate as of yesterday is approximately 98%. School coaches and operations, I just want to give a big shout out to our music department, Mr. James Baum, Matt Loeb, and Mrs. Christmas Smetana. We all together went to Disney World, and you know, I got, you know, I was lucky enough and fortunate enough to attend the trip with them, and you should have seen, you know, our students, our Bulldogs, perform really in front of the world, right? Because Disney World is where the world comes together. They complemented their uniformity, their voices, their ability to play the instruments. So everyone, at least a representative of the world, got to see our B at their best. So I want to thank the music department for leading our students in the trip, all the Bulldogs that participated, and I myself personally had a great time with the Bulldogs as well in Orlando and Disney Springs. Coffee with the principal is tomorrow, Wednesday, January 25th, at 9:00 AM in room 201. We also have the same, on the same day tomorrow, we have a college planning tips for sophomores in the evening from 6:00 to 7:00 in the auditorium. Incoming freshman registration is this Saturday, January 28th, from 8:00 to 3:00 PM in the cafeteria. And then, we have our concert choir Tuesday, February 7th, from 7:00 to 8:30 in the auditorium. Under activities and athletics, I would like to congratulate the boys' wrestling team for winning conference first time in over 12 years. And then, next Saturday, we will be hosting the regional. So a big shout out to Coach Kirby, his staff, and all the Bulldogs that are part of the wrestling team. And also, congratulations to our cheerleading team for winning conference for the fifth year in a row. So we're doing well, you know, systemically, academically, and in activities, really proud of our school and all the staff and all the administrators that make it happen. And that concludes my principal's report. Now, I would like to invite Mr. Dave Mannan, our Assistant Principal for Student Affairs, who will go over our first semester culture and activity report.
I'm wondering if we want to move, take out of order slightly, and have the student advisors, since they mesh in with your report. Is that okay with everyone, leave? Since I think a lot of your reporting supports Dr. Freitas's comments.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And I will say, I did watch the videos of the band and orchestra performing. It was phenomenal. It was really, it was fun. So thank you, Dr. Mannan, or Mr. Mannan, for your indulgence.
Soon to be Dr. Mannan.
Yeah, he's almost there.
Okay. So to the student advisors.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a great start to the second semester. Teachers are beginning new units, and many students are adjusting to different classes this semester.
I was taking government first semester, and now I'm taking urban studies, which is about the history and growth of Chicago. A lot of seniors are still hearing back from colleges about their decisions, and National Signing Day is May 1st. I personally am still in the college decision process, and I'm waiting to hear back from three more schools. And then, moving on to activities and athletics, the boys and girls' spring sports are starting up, which include boys and girls' track and field, baseball, softball, lacrosse, soccer, badminton, and boys' volleyball. There is a varsity boys' basketball game tonight at 7:00 PM against ICCP, and the theme is USA. The girls' track and field also has started our preseason workouts, and our very first varsity meet is February 14th at Main East, and the first JV meet is February 28th at Main East as well.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As the second semester begins, a reminder to seniors who applied regular decision to schools to submit their mid-year transcript request form to complete their applications. And to recap my personal college decisions, I'm also waiting on three schools to hear back, but so far, I've gotten into Purdue, Case Western, Illinois Tech, UIC, and others. And like Asia, I still haven't committed to any school yet, but I'm excited to see where I end up. Moving on to school culture, the second semester started off great for students with the late start on the first day back. And in my experience here at RB, this is the first time that the school has implemented that, but I think that it made students more productive and focused, since they got to sleep in more, and obviously, it's great for teachers, too. And I think it should be a permanent change to be considered, because I think it's great all around. And also, the first week back from winter break, the deans organize grade-level assemblies, essentially reminding students to stay up to date with school events via the Remind app, and to follow RB's social media for further updates. And recently, I noticed the unequal access that there was for English and Spanish options in the school's automated voice message when you called the RB main office. And mainly, this is because my mom is always the one who would have to call when I'm absent or excused, and she can't navigate the phone tree. So recently, I suggested to Dr. Freitas that we should have a Spanish option as well, and he put that into effect quickly. And as of now, we have a Spanish option, meaning that both English and Spanish-speaking parents have equal access to communicate with the main office. And lastly, lots of school activities are coming up soon, like Boys Basketball Senior Night is on Friday, February 10th, against Timothy Christian at 7:00 PM, and the Winter Formal is coming up on Friday, February 17th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, and it's free with the activity pass, or $10 without one. And the Winter Bin and Orchestra Concert is on Thursday, February 9th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. I really appreciate all your, I think, I speak for all of us. We really appreciate all your input, and the bilingual phone service is a solid suggestion, the fact that the administration was able to implement it so quickly, too. So thank you to everyone involved.
Do you know, like, on the Spirit Day, where you're supposed to wear the blue and white, do any of the classes actually reach 100%?
I think some do.
Some do. The winner, the winning classes always seem to be like the same ones every time, so.
Oh, okay.
Should maybe the board come in Spirit wearing it?
I was trying to think of a way to maybe try to encourage more of the classes to be at 100%, and then Dr. Freitas can, you know, make up the difference between the five classes that get awards and the six or seven. And if he couldn't, I would do it. If we could just, you know, throw out a little bonus there.
I think SA organizes that, right?
They do.
So maybe that's something to put out there, that Mr. Welch is interested in pushing along Spirit there.
Making more than five classes at 100%, and I'll kick in something. We'll see how the social media works and see if we can get that going for Spirit Day.
We call it the Board Challenge, Mr. Welch.
The Board Challenge.
Yeah. Okay.
And I would like to invite up Mr. Dave Mannan, our Assistant Principal of Student Affairs, who will give his first semester culture and activity report. Mr. Mannan?
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to report out on the average daily attendance, tardies per month, and suspension offenses from first semester. Starting with our attendance and looking at our overall data, we came in at a 93.12 average first semester, which is similar to 93.58%, which we had in 2022. We're going to break down the numbers here in a little bit, but just looking at it by month, it started off strong with 94.6, is typical. September, 93.8. October, 93.1. November, 90.2. We'll put an asterisk there and come back to that. And then, December, 93.85. A couple of factors that impacted our overall attendance. Before we start the school year, you know, we can't project or forecast what we're going to see in regards to illnesses and things like that in the building, but that had a huge impact on us, especially late in the fall. So aside from that, we had 492 students, or excuse me, 492 mental health days that were taken by students from first semester. As you know, all students can take up to five mental health days, according to the state that put that out last school year. The student body also reported 4,859 days of illness. That comes out to around 2.9 or so per student. And then, that's a significant increase from the reported illnesses this time. The previous semester was 2,889.
Does that include the mental health days or not? That's, that's...
Aside from it.
In addition to?
Correct. We had 616 more days of reported illnesses in November alone than the previous year. We saw that through, you know, the amount of students that are coming through our health office, but more or less with the flu, that really impacted the building late in the fall. And then, we also continued to track COVID numbers, and we saw escalated COVID numbers as well from last year. Any questions on attendance?
I do have one question.
Yeah.
So for COVID protocol, so if they're exposed or sick, or even if they test positive and don't have symptoms, and they have to stay home, can they log in and not count against the attendance, or what happens there?
No, they have to log. It's like a regular sick day now, because it's only five days.
Yeah.
There is no, there is no, like, dual weather zoom in.
So then, that's five days out then, right?
Correct.
Oh, well.
If tested positive.
Yeah, okay.
And I would assume, I mean, also, I would assume that we're encouraging people, if you do think you, even if you don't test positive for COVID, if you're sick, stay home.
Have a fever or symptoms.
Stay home, right. That's a real paradigm shift from
Yeah.
four years ago, right, where it was, take an aspirin and... Right. So that's going to increase the numbers, I think, as well.
That's going to increase the numbers, so you have to keep that.
And we continue to test in the health office as well, so we do encourage students to come down, and we still have that CLIA certification where we hand test available for students as needed. Looking and moving out to the tardy data, we saw a decrease, which is great, in our per-period average, from 11.6 to 9.62. The 9.62 average is the number of students tardy per period, per class, on a daily basis. So that's great. We see that decrease down for the students that are in attendance. We want to continue to lower that number, but when I came here, it was around 15-plus on average. So that's great, that we continue to see that trend decrease. We had a little bit of an uptick last semester, excuse me, last year during this time, just due to students re-acclimating themselves to the building. But as we're hitting our stride now with tardies, we're really getting in the groove, continue to field some, you know, high-peak times first period with traffic and things like that that are out of our control. But in regards to in-building tardies throughout the school, they have really seen a good amount of students get into class on time, and less students in the hallway, which means more engagement and teachers starting their classes on time, so. Looking at our suspension data, we had a total of 24 students who received a suspension first semester. This would be an out-of-school suspension. This is a decrease of 19 suspensions from the previous school year, or previous semester at this time. We had one student in possession of alcohol, seven students in possession of a THC vape device, nine students engage in altercation. You know, when you have an altercation, it's one party and another party, so that would be one altercation, but unfortunately, it's two students there. So nine total engaging in an altercation, five students who disrupted a learning environment, one student in possession of a pocket, small pocket knife, and one student had showed some inappropriate and noncompliant behavior. Breaking that down a little bit by grade level, nine freshmen total, five sophomores, eight juniors, and two seniors. And then, I like to report this, the demographics based on race. And so, suspension per race, 12 Hispanic students, 11 white, and one black student from first semester. And then, the percentages... So suspension per race, total students enrolled, so we have 1,683 students. And then, the two different graphs that you see there, out of the total, so you see the 12 Hispanic, 11 white, one black, that's the total percent by the student population as represented, and then we do it per the students that are suspended as well. So overall, I mean, you're seeing a low amount of students that are suspended per race, and this is the lowest that we've had, our suspension data, since I've been here since eight-plus years. And so we really almost cut our suspensions in half, and how did we do that? One, we had great behavior in our building. Two, we enacted the electronic device policy, so we're eliminating distractions in the classrooms, and then just overall, our students have just behaved awesome. And we're utilizing Third Millennium as an intervention as well, so we're putting students in online class, and then also, it's an intervention with us down in the dean's office, with some support from the student services office, to kind of see what's at the root of the problem, and see how we can intervene and move forward, instead of having a student out, they're actually in, for small minor fractions, and then let's see how we can support them going forward. So that's been a plus, and something that we want to key on going forward here as well. So new initiatives that we're doing, culture... So new initiatives that we're doing, Culture and Climate Survey was completed by students during grade-level assemblies. We did handbook QR codes, so on the first page of the handbook, it's an easy way for students to see what they should know. And they won't have to sift through it, so the top five things or top 10 things that the Bulldog should know, they can key up on that right away and see that. We held a Cybersecurity and Digital Citizenship presentation in conjunction with the Student Services, our Secret Service Department, sorry. We held an all-school assembly in September, we just recently completed that as well for second semester. Student conferences in the cafeteria for students that held unverified attendance or excessive tardies in conjunction with our deans. We utilize remote scanners for students that are leaving early. And then again, 66 students completed a Third Millennium course as a restorative intervention. We're continuing to utilize our ELAPR. It's the program through West 40, we call it Tapestry now. It's an alternative learning program for students that have higher significant truancy or attendance issues. We link them up through that program, and then it's a daily check-in with an influx of supports throughout the day as well. Attendance Behavior Expectations, again, through grade-level assemblies, the HERO system. We utilize to scan students in through tardies, automated parent phone calls and parent meetings for chronically truant students. Just a quick, do we have any questions there before we go on to activities?
As a parent, I find it frustrating when, and I know on high-volume days, it's hard to notify the security at the front desk that are taking in the late people. But like, my son is prone to nosebleeds, and so we can't leave the house when he is gushing blood. So I call and then he texts me, he's like, "Mom, I got marked late." And I'm like, "It'll work itself out," but it's frustrating to him because he knows I called him in, yet he still has to walk in with like the note to his first-period teacher, like, "You're 15 minutes late," and it was a legit reason. So I know you have the scanning system for early release, but, and I understand, on some days, there's just a lot of volume, but it's frustrating to the kids who know that their mom called because they were right next to me when I called. So, and there's like, and I know you can't take every kid's word for it, but he gets upset when he has to give that unexcused tardy to his teacher. And then I show him later, you can go into Skyward, you can see that it's now excused. And he's like, "Yeah, but when I was in the classroom that day, like, I was getting the evil eye."
Yeah, and that's something that we're currently looking at the handbook and revamping that tardy procedures. And that's something that we're looking at going forward. It does clear itself up, so we do issue, because we do have an influx of students, we want to get them to class, so we maybe mark them through. It's an automated ticket that comes out with the unexcused tardy. But then once the call gets placed, the attendance office corrects that attendance marking as excused.
And I, as an adult, get that, but to explain that to a kid.
The reality though is to get four or 500 phone calls in the morning.
Right, exactly. I know, and on some days.
Attendance receptionists don't get through that.
Right. There's only so much time.
No one at 1:00, yeah, right?
I will say the attendance receptionist voicemail has improved this year. There's something, and I can't think of exactly what it is, but I did notice it was
There's a couple of things there. One, we're supporting that office because it's a big task to get through the amount of phone calls that come through that office. But also, parents now, to your point, they can go online and actually in Skyward as well and choose language
That was a big change, yes.
that they need as well, but then automate that response. So they don't have to call, they can do the attendance through Skyward, through the parent portal, which has been a big plus as well.
So Dave, the hand machines that the security and the deans have doesn't talk to Skyward, correct?
It does, but there's a little bit of a delay. So it's a third party, so we push it up and then it gets grabbed.
And when they swipe in and when they're coming through the door, it wouldn't show that maybe. But at that point in time, we don't know if that message has been entered into Skyward, so there's really no way to.
Right.
Okay.
And I get not wanting to take his word for it.
Can you just give a little more background, what's this Third Millennium course? I think that might be the first time I'm hearing of it.
Yeah, so Third Millennium is something I used in schools U46 when I was there as a dean, and it was an alternative to suspension. So students that maybe have a classroom disruption or a behavior that maybe might warrant a suspension, we would put them through this Third Millennium course. And it has like a variety of topics that you could do. We've been utilizing it a lot for peer conflicts. And so there's a program just specifically outlined for that. And so it's probably a two-to-three-hour course. The student completes a profile for themselves, and it's actually confidential, so they can only see it. Then they answer questions throughout that course relating to the topic or what the behavior was. And then they, at the end, see how their profile matches up to the answers that they provided. And then what we see after that is a completed course. We link back up with that student, and it's almost like a re-entry back to the classroom, but they're already here. So we're taking three or maybe total four hours of their day, three probably in our alternative day assignment room. Then they come back down to the office, we talk to them, "Hey, you know, what'd you learn? How are we going to, you know, go forward or move forward? Maybe look at a behavior agreement in collaboration with the student and get them back to class." So that's been very beneficial. And then we have that for peer conflicts for, there's like a THC 101, alcohol 101, similar type courses.
Any more questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
And then on the activity front, we just held our freshman orientation. We had a fair, it was really heavily attended. I thought this class, this incoming freshman class, it seemed like every single one of them was there. So it was really well-attended. And then I want to give a kudos to all of our sponsors and our students who represent our club and activity areas. We held monthly meetings with our student executive board just to plan out events and to see what supports they needed. 16 students from various activities attended a leadership workshop with me at Lyons Township this fall, future Bulldog Night. And associated with that, we had student interest surveys that went with that as well. We did Activity Spotlights, which you're going to see here in a second. We're going to put that up online. But last semester, RBTV, which we promised here last year, did some videos of different like activities and what we're doing here in the building. And so those students actually worked on those and then completed those as their final assignment. And we'll see those up online from some of our activity areas. So the great things that our kids are doing that may not be on the basketball court, you know, it may be in the robotics room instead. So we're going to highlight those programs in a video fashion and have that up soon. And then really excited about some of the new clubs that are on campus. So cybersecurity is something that one of our staff members, Jessica Maritzin, I headed up with Dan Baterigo, and that has been taking off. And it's in conjunction with an online program, but we've had around 12 students attend that consistently. And there's some associated links with like professional careers going forward. So I think it's kind of a hot career right now that a lot of people are going into. And so it's nice to have some type of introductory offering for students in an activity sense. So that's been great. Symphonic Orchestra, getting band students with strings in an outside setting. Technology Club, just kind of formalizing that. And then Bowling, the bowling club has been something that we've had a lot of fun with. We're fortunate to work with Bowling Alley in Lyons. And then we have just students going out right now and recreationally bowling, having fun with each other. And then we had an activity night where we have leaders and offered it up to all of our activities in athletic areas to have a night where they came out and then we competed against each other for a winner, and that was really fun. So we'll look to continue to do that and kind of explore what bowling has to offer here at RB.
Well, those videos you referenced, will they be on those screens? The new screens in the foyer and by the fieldhouse? Okay.
Yeah, so that's athletic adventure there, and it's a touch pro screen. So we can link up through the tabs. You can link on like the calendar, past historic performances. That's going to take a little bit to upload our calendar, our social media feeds are on there. But also, there's an activity tab, and when you hit that, it'll go to it. That's also a live domain feed, so we can, any screen in our building, we can link what's on that screen to any TV that's in our building. So activity nights and things like that, when the freshmen come in, or we hold activity fairs, or even just when we open the house, you know, our building up for different performances, those screens are so vital because it shows the culture and climate of what we're doing here at RB, which is great. So we'll look to continue to push more of that through those technologies.
Great, thank you. Comments or questions?
Suggestion for new freshman families that are coming in. I think it would be helpful if they received like a save the date for when the summer program book comes out, because I don't think it's very clear when it comes out. Like, I found out because a mom called me, "Hey, did you sign your kid up?" And I was like, "What? I didn't realize it was, it was starting." And I think this way, you're, there will be less of a chance of classes getting canceled?
I think there was some confusion with that because RBTV kind of jumped ahead of our program and when we sent that out. And so they had their own list and sign-ups for that, specific to RBTV, and that's a little bit before when we send that out. So thank you for the suggestion. We'll look to do that.
Especially if you have a registration coming up soon.
This Saturday.
This Saturday, just a little postcard, "Hey, heads up, you can get connected to the school sooner rather than later." Yes, be on the lookout for the book to come out in April or whatever.
And I
Check the website, yeah.
And I do want to say, I mean, it's great that RBTV did that, they filled all their spots already. So I mean, again, going back to this freshman class, they, we're seeing already that they're going to be heavily involved. And so anything we can do on top of it to give that information out sooner would be great, right?
I found out about one of the new freshman moms last year. Like, she wasn't even a parent here. She's like, "Hey, did you sign your kid up?" And I was like, "How do you know this? Somehow, somehow she was in the know." So yeah, if you could just put that out for everyone to know, that'd be great.
Will do.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Thank you, Mr. Mann. Thanks for your patience.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next part of the board agenda is we, an update on the district goals. And tonight, I have present is Darren Severs from School Perceptions. And Darren has served as the contact for Dr. Smetan and myself since early fall. Darren helped us develop the communication survey that went out to the community as well as parents, students, and staff as part of one of the district's goals, which is to research opportunities and methods to increase two-way engagement with all stakeholders of the RBHS community. The board received a copy of Darren's presentation, and Darren will be presenting tonight. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Darren.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Darren Severs. My background, I'm fairly new with the company. I just started July 1st. Prior to that, I worked for the same school district in suburban Milwaukee for 27 years as a counselor, elementary principal, high school principal, and then the last nine years as superintendent. But due to an illness in my family, I needed to step down from my superintendent position. And School Perceptions is based out of my home district. We use their products for years, and their owner had asked me for years to consider joining the company because he wanted an experienced administrator on his team because we, all we do is survey schools. And so I, it was just a, pretty much a God-wink to be able to have this, this position that allowed me to be a bit more flexible, as much as I hated leaving my district. So before I started, I wanted to say what a pleasure it was working on this project with Kevin and Kristen. They had a very clear vision of what they wanted for you as a school board and on behalf of your district. And while we write custom surveys for school districts all across the country, it's hard to do unless the district has a very clear vision of what they want, particularly something like this. Most of our products are based on capital referendum or operating referendum, things of that nature. In my school district, we did a custom survey. I don't know if you've heard of COVID, but we had COVID up in Wisconsin. And we did a community engagement survey to gauge what it would look like to open up amongst a pandemic circumstance. But this was a unique project for us as a company to do a communication survey on behalf of the community. Kevin and Kristen made it very easy for us because they knew exactly what they wanted. And five or six drafts later, we were ready to launch to your community. So I'll be presenting our results tonight, talking a little bit about our methodology. And then the core of it is to get down into the nitty-gritty about your results and answer any questions that you have. So excuse me for turning my back too, but I need to follow along with the PowerPoint with you. So, background of our company, pardon me. We've been in existence for 20 years. We've done surveys in all 50 states, done over 10,000 staff, parents, student, and community surveys, and we've helped over 900 districts navigate referendum, strategic planning processes. Our process, we only have a couple of competitors in the nation for this type of work, Gallup being the main one. And our philosophy is different than Gallup. Gallup, generally speaking, does a random sampling. We disagree with that process. We feel like there's potential to miss key voices in your community. So our process is to give every citizen in your school district an opportunity to speak to you about their feelings about whatever topic, whether it's putting in a pool. My district, the controversial issue is should we build a performing arts center or not? Secure entrances on all five buildings. In your case, how are we doing with communication? So by giving everyone an opportunity to reply, that ensures that the data is more reliable. We mailed a paper survey to every property owner in your school district, and they had an option, two ways they could take the survey. They could fill it out paper and pencil or a cup of coffee, mail it back to, back to us, and we compiled the data that way. Or they could, each survey had a one-time encrypted user code where they could fill it out online. And I'll talk to you about what the breakdown was of paper versus online within your district in a bit. So this is how your, your survey window worked. We had, we launched a survey in November. You had 964 respondents. 337 of your respondents took the survey via paper and mailed it back to us. Your response rate was 8.3% with a margin of error of plus or minus 3%. Now, you may be sitting there asking yourself, "Wow, 8%? That's not very good." Quite honestly, before I, before I got knee-deep in our company's process, I would have felt the same way. But our owner and president has said over his 20 years of running the company, once we hit 10%, the data virtually doesn't move. And I did 41 projects this fall of varying sizes of referendum in Minnesota, Wisconsin, Iowa, and Illinois. And that proved to be the case as I tracked our projects. Once we hit that 10% mark, the data virtually didn't move. That's enough of a representation. Now, the fact that you're at 8.3% isn't quite there. But also, this is not a super exciting survey, let's be honest. People don't necessarily get up in the morning stoked to fill out a communication survey. If you're talking about a $50 million referendum to add something to the building or an operational referendum for some reason, those surveys, our company average is about 17%. So to get 8% back on something in the line of communication, I think is very good. And it means that the people that want to talk to you about how you're communicating took the survey. This is the age breakdown of the people that responded, which is the bell curve that we typically see. The 35 to 44-year-olds, 45 to 54-year-olds, those are your parents. And it's nice to see that the retirees in your community are also engaged in wanting to give their opinion to you as well. Students who are that 15 to 24-year-old group, they weren't quite as plugged in as we maybe thought. But I, again, I don't think your students are real concerned about talking to you about how the school district communicates with them. They're, they're just not wanting to get marked tardy and get to class, right? So as far as respondents, 93% of the respondents were residents. 5% were not residents, and 2% weren't exactly sure if they lived in the district or not in the district. Now, you may say, "But I thought you mailed it to only people in the district." But we did survey staff, and some of your staff would, would be people that may not live in your district. And you may have some open enrollment parents that took the survey but aren't residents of your district, but elect to come to your district. And so going forward, knowing that this is a stakeholder survey, the data will be talking about what will be specific to the 93% that live in the district. Also, to break the data out a bit further, 46% of your respondents were non-staff, non-students. So they don't work here and they don't have kids here, but they live in the community. 37% of the respondents were parents, 5% students, 5% staff. And then this is how the municipalities broke out. And as I talked to Kevin and Kristen, they thought that this is fairly commensurate with how your population distributes across your school district. And then finally, 94% of the, or let's see here, 6% of the respondents were employees and 43% were, were parents. All right, so we're, now we're going to talk about the data that broke out the feedback on your communication. We asked, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to show you how each group rated you on our four-point rating scale, four being great, three being good, two fair, and one poor. And then we'll combine the data so that you see the overall markings. So the staff scores, you'll see their clarity of communication, length of communication, overall effectiveness of the communication and frequency scored, all scored below three, so slightly less than good. Parents gave far more favorable marks. They were, were almost exactly between great and good. And the non-parents, non-staff, which represents 75% of your community, by the way. Across all of our years of doing these surveys, we've found that 25% of your populace are parents, 75% are non-parents, non-staff. So that's a big part of your community that isn't really connected to the school. So that's a tough population to reach, and we'll talk about that more later on when we talk about findings. And we'll talk about that more later on when we talk about findings. We also asked them how effective RB is in using the following methodologies. Facebook, RBTV, phone notifications, remind, email, school board meetings, school newspaper, YouTube. Again, these ratings are just rating scales. We'll combine all that data to, to give you a better perspective on what these, these marks all combined really mean. So when it comes to clarity of communication, when you take all three of those subgroups, staff, parents, non-parents, non-staff, 57% gave your school district good or great ratings when it came to the clarity of the communication from the district. Length of communication, 56.5% gave you good or great marks for the, the length of your communications. 56.7% overall effectiveness of communication, 53.2% on your frequency of communication. As far as rating scales for how you communicate with them, methodologies, email was, was good or great at 50% of the rate. Phone notifications, 45.6%. And then it descends from there. And as you'll see, an interesting column to follow is the not sure. So that tells me that if they're not sure, they, they don't, they don't know because they're, they're not, they're not using that methodology. So email clearly the favorite, phone second. Then you get down to social media. You see, we get down to remind, 62% aren't even sure. And then it increases from there. Board meetings, 60.5% aren't sure. RBTV, 71% aren't sure. School newspaper, even more. YouTube, 84.9%. And only 8% good or great there. So this, this is something that the leadership team and the board may want to think about as far as what communication strategies do you hitch your wagon to? You've got a lot, but they aren't, you, they're used at a wide-ranging frequency. We also asked a question, what is your preferred method? How would you most like to hear from the school district? Gray represents the staff. The blue bar, turquoise bar, represents parents. And, and then the purple is your non-parents, non-staff. But we watch them very closely. When we're talking about a tax increase for referendum, that's a very powerful group because again, that's 75% of your community. So you'll see that far and away, the most widely sought-after means of communication is email. But that does not work for that non-parent, non-staff group because they're not on your email tree. Interestingly, to see, and this is not always the case in every community that we serve, their most widely used methodology of hearing from you is the landmark newspaper. So kudos to your newspaper.
I would point out, we have a reporter Bob Skolik in the audience.
That slide, that slide has been here for, for months. But that, that is how they hear about the school. So if you're not using them widely, which obviously you're having a board meeting and you have a reporter here, you should be because that is where they're looking for, for information from you. But the second most popular means would be a school district newsletter. Now, there's been temptations by school districts that we serve to go away from newsletters altogether. People don't, they don't want that, that piece of paper. Everything should be E this and E that. That's actually wrong. Our survey process proves that out.
Well, I've been asking for that for five years.
Yeah, so across the nation, our statistical average is 30% of our clients or, or, or people that respond to our surveys do the paper handheld survey rather than the link. So you need to meet people where they're at. And, and people still value having something in their hands, whether it's the newspaper or it's a school newsletter written by Kevin and his admin team or the board to update the community on how things are going. That's a lot of work. Other means, website obviously is a go-to. We'll talk about the website in a little bit. Social media, phone notifications, particularly for urgent things like a lockdown or a snow day, things of that nature. But then, again, to a lesser extent, you see your ratings for YouTube, RBTV, school newspaper, school board meetings, very, very low. So this gives the board some guidance on what is the most effective way to reach our community beyond our staff and parents who have that email availability? All right, next up, we did ask some evaluative questions related to the website. Again, I'll show you the ratings per subgroup, and then we'll combine them. We asked them to rate the website on quality of the information provided. Quite favorable scores from the staff and parents, lesser so from the non-parents, non-staff. Ease of finding information, seems like the staff know how to navigate it pretty well, to a lesser extent, parents, and at even a lesser extent, the non-parents, non-staff. And then providing feedback, opportunities to give feedback to the school district. Staff were only at a 2, 2.5, parents at 3.05, then a rather low score for the non-parents, non-staff. So when we combined all of that information on the website together for all three subgroups, quality of the information, slightly above 50%. Ease of finding information, slightly below 50%. And then providing opportunities for feedback, just above 40%. So maybe some work to do there as far as ease of finding information on the website and providing opportunities for your community to give you feedback. But a survey is a great, is a great tool. So we did follow up on that question. What is your preferred means for giving feedback to the school district? Once again, we're a convenient society. So parents and staff wanted email. Non-parents, non-staff, they can access the website if they needed to email Kevin or your, your administrative team. But they did come back and say, district survey, school survey. And I'm not trying to plant the seeds for future business, but that is our wheelhouse. That is what we do. And if there are other topics you want to cover, that is something we can help you with. We do community engagement surveys all the time, satisfaction surveys on how the staff are feeling about their, their school and how communities feeling about their school. School board meetings, to a lesser extent, opportunity for them to come to you and, and tell you how they feel things are going. And then phone came at some of the lowest scores. I was grateful to know that beyond the, just the communication questions, every survey we give, whether it's a capital referendum, operating referendum, we ask some performance questions. And when I told Kevin and Kristen about these questions that we ask on every survey, they were very, very interested in having us ask, as long as we have your parents engaged, parents, staff, and community engaged, they asked me to include these in our survey. So we, with every survey we give, we ask the community, how do you feel your school district is doing in four areas? Delivering a high quality of education, building pride in the community, managing funds, and keeping the public informed. So these were included as part of your core survey as well. Those are all your sub-scores. As you see, anywhere between 2.5 and, and just under 3.5. These numbers will make sense though when we combine them all together. And the nice thing about the fact that we give this on every survey is we have a huge database of comparison data from all 50 states, from schools all across the country. So this next slide I'm going to show you will tell you how your school district and community are feeling about your school relative to schools all across the nation. So when it comes to delivering a high-quality education, 85% of respondents felt you're doing a good or a great job for an average score of 3.24, which puts you in the 82nd percentile across the nation. Or you're scoring better than all but 18% of districts across the country. When it comes to building pride in the community, 77% of respondents felt you're doing a good or great job for an average of a 3.1, which is better than 69, which is in the 69th percentile or better than 30, 31, all but 31% of the, the school districts in the nation. Managing funds appropriately. Generally speaking, the most criticized make, score on, of these four questions actually was not your lowest-scoring area. It's 69% felt you're doing a good or great job. And you're doing better than 61% of the nation on that metric. The area where you came in the lowest was on your communication score, which is ironic. Because we're doing a communication survey and shows good instincts by your leadership team that, that we took this proactive step. You only are scoring better than 41% of the districts in the nation when it comes to communication. And then we always close with this question on every one of our surveys as well. And, and we recently presented at the state school board convention in Milwaukee on this topic because on a scale of zero to 10, we asked all respondents, how likely would you recommend the district to a friend or family member? The greatest compliment any district can get is, would you send your friends or family members' children to that school? We have found that this correlates very, very highly with referendums passing. Citizens will not increase their taxes for a district that they wouldn't refer to their friends or family. But if they do feel strongly about the district, they're more inclined to let their taxes go up a bit and invest in their school. This is where you came out looking very good. Riverside Brookfield scored a 7.83 average recommendation score. The average across all the districts where we've asked this question, and we've done it in hundreds of districts across the country is a 7.13. This puts you at the 84th percentile or better than all but 16% of school districts in the country as far as referring the district to a friend or family member. Most powerful to me is you look at how, what percent got a 10 rating. More than a third of the people that took the survey said 100% absolutely would send my, my friends or family's kids to that school. And we always look, how far down do you have to go to get to the 50th percentile? We only have to go to a nine. Over half of your respondents give you a nine or a 10. So they're very, very happy. Those neutral scores tend to hurt the average. Those are your senior citizens. That's almost exactly your senior citizen respondent rate. They're too far removed from the school to even know. So they just put, give you a five because that's the neutral score. So you're very, very top-heavy. You're at, you're at 66% or at eight or above. So kudos, you're seen in a very, people are happy. People are very happy. If anything, the only weakness would be communication. So I had some key takeaways. What did we learn by conducting this survey? Overall satisfaction is very high at Riverside Brookfield with 85% of respondents indicating the district is delivering a high-quality education. Email, newsletters, local news, website, and phone notifications were at the top of your list amongst the myriad of ways that you communicate with the people that you serve. Keeping the public informed is an area for improvement as 58% of the non-parents, non-staff rely on the no, local newspaper for their source of information. They may need something else beyond the newspaper if you're going to really do a good job of keeping them informed. 46% of respondents felt the district did a good or great job of making the website easy to use. I would say that, that, that may be an area for improvement. Website is designed to be convenient by nature. And if they're, they're not feeling that way, 54% are saying that they don't feel like it's easy to use. That might be a bit heavy for you as a board and a leadership team. And then 42% of respondents felt the district did a good or great job of giving them opportunities for feedback. So you may want to look at different ways that you can get feedback, more regular feedback from your, from your community. Whether it's newsletters in their hands or survey tools in their hands on a, on a regular basis, they're, they're looking for ways to talk to you more and engage with you. So what are the next steps? Having worked with 40 different districts this fall and seeing all kinds of different perspectives on everything from buildings to operations, these were my takeaways as I looked at your data as our, as an independent third-party researcher. Various methods and platforms are used by the district for communication purposes, creating some inconsistencies and challenges with communications. You have lots of communication tools, but they're used very, very inconsistently. Apparent priorities from my perspective, proactive and consistent community, community, communication with the community would be a priority, in my opinion, because 75% of your non-parent, non-staff households are part of this community, and they need a way to hear from you. Improving the navigation and content of the district website would be a priority. And continuing to support the use of email and social media to parents and students would be a priority as well because they made it loud and clear. They count on email, they count on the website. So my recommendation based on all of these slides, and then I'll take any questions you have for me, would be, I could see value, and a lot of districts in, in the Milwaukee suburban area are going to this, is, is trying to centralize communication, district communication, and high school communication, having a flow through one person. One, kind of one communication mouthpiece for the district. Maybe minimize the number of methodologies and have that all come through one person so that, that you have one person proactively communicating all the great things taking place in the district. You have a lot to celebrate, but you have to decide how you're going to communicate those things and who. I know the district right next to my district where I worked until, until July has a public relations director or a communication specialist that, that reports as superintendent and channels all the key information that they feel like the stakeholders need to hear through their, their hub communication tools, writing newsletters, working with the local newspaper to get the key information out. So those would be my takeaways based on what your community told you.
At that school you just described, how many students did they have?
Uh, that district, right now, they're about 5, 5,500 students.
Wow, 5,500?
In, in its district, that's going to be K-12, I'm assuming.
Yeah, it's K, K-12.
So we're building a 1,600 students.
Right.
I think it's one of our challenges, right?
Right. Challenges, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we, actually, I'm, I'm just working on a staff engagement survey with the district down the road from me that is also Unified High School, about, about 1,300. And I know that they do have a position donated, devoted to communication. I don't know if it's full-time or not. I haven't talked to Jeff a, a, about that. But I do know that, that it's a full-time job of running a school. So communication, communication is, is king right now. I mean, again, if, if you're, if you're not proactive in communicating with your community, then there's a lot of misinformation out there. And, and it's how to, how do we know about that, that catalog of, of, of opportunities, going up those kinds of things proactively versus you hearing about it from a friend, so.
Right, so you, if you just think even about that example, right? Current freshmen, sophomores, and juniors get that email, and those parents got that email in April where the incoming freshman parents might not get that.
I never got the email.
Right. So that's, that's an example of like, okay, you're not, you're not in that, you're not in that loop yet. So you didn't get that loop. Or, all right, the media piece, our local media, whether, even though Bob attends all our meetings, they basically dedicate one story per high school in the area. So there's SLT and then the feeder schools. So you get one story. So it's not necessarily going to be on all the great things like student association talked about tonight. Or, right, it's going to be on something that's maybe more of a hotter topic or a broader topic and not necessarily all the great things we're doing.
I think we had talked about having somebody come in as a part-time communication specialist years ago.
Well, we talked about, you know, in our board retreat though, but we wanted to do this survey to see where the survey led us first.
But I mean, a couple of years ago, we had kicked that idea around. Having somebody help you write all the communications.
Well, we, we, we wrote a newsletter up until the pandemic. But the problem is the newsletter would go out electronically, and it would go out, it would almost be a month old news. Because, right, stuff would happen by the time you write it. It's not something that we're able to get out or do a...
That would only go to district, to enrolled student families.
Uh, or if you signed up on the website. If you could find it on the website.
Right. I feel like the split was pretty...
Sure.
We weren't keeping people on the list after their students graduated.
Right.
So the schools you've worked with, do they have something on the website that says, you know, if you want to get news, sign up for emails, right on the face? I mean, how do you get the public to get these emails? Do you have to get them?
We had that. We had that under community where you could sign up for...
We need a flashing thing on the front.
Right. I think, I think two key things, my two takeaways from, from this were like, cleaning up our website. We buy a cookie cutter website that we pay for every year, right? So they create a template for schools to use. You pick one or five of these templates or one or 10 of these templates. Our IT department works with us to put it in. But again, our IT department are specialists and experts in IT. They're not communications. So they'll put something up, and they'll take it down when we say, hey, it's time to take that down. Or, right, so I, I think things can get, you know, it can get convoluted, it can get lost.
It's very... We took a giant step after you came in the building from the website that we did have. So now maybe it's time to take another step.
I mean, it's very content-heavy, I think. But if you look at any of the neighboring districts, I think there's, it's, it's been my opinion, there's, well, there's a lot of other, some of the things we're talking about here are on other websites that are not readily found on our website.
Right, ours is on Twitter and Facebook and Instagram, all those things.
What are those?
Yeah, and I'm going to tell you, I, I, I don't know your IT person or whoever is your webmaster, but I would tell you that in, in my district, brilliant man, but didn't have necessarily, didn't have the instincts about ease of navigation for a 72-year-old grandmother who's just trying to find... just trying to find out when the middle school musical is on Friday night. It's, it's, users have varying diff, varying degrees of, of technological competency. That's why you have to hit them from multiple avenues. Have the website be super easy to use, but there may be, there may, there may be room for a quarterly newsletter that, with a calendar of events, celebrating what took place, previewing what's about to take, what's about to.
Public relations is different than technology, right? That, that's the bottom line.
Hundred percent.
The Brookfield Library sends out a quarterly, and I, I keep saying this, sends out their quarterly newsletter. I cut out the little squares, I put them on the fridge in a magnet. I'm on a computer twelve hours a day. When I come home, I'm not opening up that computer to find out anything. By, by the time I get home, my eyes are bleeding. I'm not looking for anything more. But I love that newsletter. It comes with the library. I cut out little things, I cut out little things and I share that. It comes four times a year and I keep it until the next one comes.
And I think the needle's moving the other way. With our surveys this fall, again, the company average, I told you, is seventy, thirty on seventy percent link, thirty percent paper surveys that comes back to our, we're only a company of seven people. Our owner's wife enters all the data for the handheld. I mean, we're a mom and pops organization, but many of the districts this fall is more like fifty-five, forty-five paper and link. People more and more, particularly if they're thinking about like a capital referendum or you think about a schedule, they like to see it, touch it, put it on the refrigerator. We insert architecture images of this is what the new high school looked like if you vote yes on the referendum. They like to touch stuff, not just preview a link on the website. And I think that helps with our data because they have some time to think about it, you know, make notes on it and then mail back to us. So I think a newsletter has a place. Got great support from the local news. Clearly they, they read the local news, but that, that may not be enough. But again, that's a, that's a lot of, that's a lot of work.
From your responses, I'm not sure this was one of your, in the presentation, what was the split between electronic submission and the paper submission?
Yeah, that was on.
Did I miss that?
Three hundred and sixty-seven paper.
A third.
Three thirty-seven, three thirty-seven.
Okay, well, everyone had a better grasp of the numbers than I did on that one. Thank you.
Over a third.
Okay.
Yeah, so sixty-six, thirty-three.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of times too, you're looking on, on electronic, this happens all the time. I'll see something on the website or any website and then I'll go back to try and find it and I can't find it again.
We would have to, you know, some things we're going to visit, Krista and I have already put together a shortlist of some ideas that I've been brainstorming in our Tuesday cabinet meetings. We have a couple of good ideas, maybe a position dedicated to not only managing social media, the website and also quarterly newsletters or some type of, right? The biggest takeaway I get from this is we're, we're losing, whether, whether they're not coming to RB or after they've left RB or they just live in the community, that's the population we're kind of missing. And, right, the parents and students and staff seem to be, got the email, they got the quick resources, they can go to the principal's office, they can call, right? It's the, it's the people in the community that we need to celebrate all the good things and, and highlight all the good things that we're doing that we're, I think we're missing that audience right now.
We want the whole grade school population to know about the high school because they're coming here.
Right, so that would be the audience I just said, that they're not in the school as students or parents or staff, right?
Well, I mean, I think the survey supports a lot of our discussion we've had on this for a couple of years now. And obviously why we have a goal of the board to look at communications is because we all had a gut instinct that this was a, a challenge for us. I think, you know, a real positive takeaway is the generally positive response towards the district, right? So even if they're not in direct communication, there's a really solid perception of, of two oh eight. So I think we shouldn't under, undervalue that at all. But then how do we, how do we build on that? So I'm, I'm looking forward to the administration's next steps and suggestions.
And they love you and they think you're performing, these are buff and polish issues. If it's just a matter of cleaning up communication, it's not easy, but that's way easier than raising achievement and lowering dropout rates and things. So then that, that's where the heavy lifting, those things are in place. You've got some neat progress.
Do you see, do you see school districts outsource that or more internally have an internal position?
Not rare. I, I haven't run into many that want to outsource that. That's, 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 that's almost, it's more of like a superintendent's right-hand man or woman, someone that can basically take your busy day and you can say, this is what's going on and need you to take this. You, you can be the ideas person, but you need someone to take it and run with it and get it to IT so it's on the website and work with the secretary or, you know, we, we had an inter, in-house graphic arts department that could do our own newsletters and, and mail them, but it takes some time to write them up and get those photography images from the wrestling team inserted in there and get that story told.
That's what we saw when we were doing the newsletter, right? We would send out, Mary Ann would send out a notice to the building principal and this is even going back when Kristen was principal and, you know, we'd have, they'd have seven or ten days to get, they'd be gathering things, but by the time they'd gather it, kind of filter through it, shorten it up, send it to Mary Ann, Mary Ann would put, send it to the, the lady that was writing the newsletters and we would proof it, we'd get that out and it was.
Days and days.
Well, it was, you would be getting the, your October newsletter talked all about September. We'd put some things on there that'd be coming in October, but.
Well, I think the principal and.
That's just being inefficient. I think if you have a, a, a calendar of, right, and you just work right backwards, it's going to take time, you're going to have to write about the October upcoming events in August and make sure that it gets out there to the community. Because I think the only thing the survey proved is what we already knew, that our non-school stakeholders, our non-parents were not feeling very engaged. And I'm curious to see of the three hundred thirty-seven paper respondents, how many of them were parents, but specifically how many of them were not? And how many of them were the community members? Because I think that's going to give us the key to the newsletter.
I think you as a board, as you fire, as you have some of these thoughts you're going to drive home and I think, oh, we could have, make a list of questions, shoot them to Kevin and I'll disaggregate it further. You know, I, you could, we can go so, there's so many ways to disaggregate this, but I can tell you that.
Because I think that's, that's our next step. We're going to need to disaggregate because again, this confirms what we all already knew. Like that's the reason why we commissioned this survey, right? Because we knew this, we had a feeling. And now we're going to need to dig a little bit deeper because clearly the parents' responses, parents are, they, they think we're doing great, right? It's the threes and higher because we get the phone call, because we get the email, because we get the, like, we get, we have all of that. And can we call some of these community members and do, like, dig deeper, do like a, a focus group to say what type of, because we could sit here all evening long and discuss about a newsletter or what type of information they want, but unless we ask them what they want, we're not going to know.
But I think we have some of the data.
Seventy-five percent of your community is that purple bar. And this survey did tell you some of that. They're saying, what is your preferred method? We asked them, didn't say what is your method. How would you most like to hear from the district? And they're saying newspaper, email, and then third is district newsletter, to a lesser extent, website. So those are your four hubs, really. They're all, thirty percent or higher.
Right, we're going to need to find out, we're going to need to come up with a plan to dedicate a resource to that. I think that's something we've been talking about for a while now. I think this just confirms it.
I agree. And part of this is the people that we're missing that aren't getting the information don't necessarily know, and being that the landmark is one of the greatest sources, they probably have some sense of what a cross-country state championship looks like, two former high school athletes being drafted into the Major League Baseball, what the school shows look like between Chicago and upcoming Greece. And like, these are really prideful things that when people know, it's an easy way to buy in. And the last question that was asked is what, would you refer, that, that fifteen percent that said neutral are the ones that just don't know about it from the, from the newspaper or whatever and don't have a sense of what that means. But if we have a newsletter, which can be as outdated as we want it to be, at least it's getting to that crowd that is otherwise not, doesn't have a, the access to show pride in their community because they just don't know. And so I think part of this is, I mean, there is a, a thing to the tactile nature of I would rather read a newspaper than read a newspaper online. I would rather, you know, the, the rather doesn't mean that I won't do the other, but it means that the accessibility is going to be important for those when we're trying to build pride. And I don't mean in an artificial way. There are great things going on between a cheerleading team that's one, five.
I think we heard it from our student representatives tonight, we heard it from the principal's report and I think.
But here, people aren't following.
No, 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 but I'm saying that the content writes itself in a lot of ways, right?
Sure.
And Dr. Freitas now emails out that principal's report and it does those bullet points summaries. That, that, to me, it's a very, a relatively simple.
But it's going to our students and parents. It's not going to.
It's not going to that seventy-five percent.
No, I think it needs to go to the library circulation desk.
So I think our next step here is, is to have the administration sit back and say, how can we accomplish these goals?
Yep.
We have the tool to confirm what we all generally believed, I think to Lorena's point. What's our next step?
Yep. One of the things that I like about some of the paper newsletters that come, they don't capture all the detail. You can still capture that on your websites.
Sure.
But the majority of that news, the newsletters are short, but they tell you what's coming up so that you're looking for that. You know, here's everything that you want to look for in the next three months. And those are the things that you're cutting out, oh, I want to be part of that, I want to enjoy that. And that way, we get our community to come to the musical, we get them to come to the Sunday performance, weekend performances. We get them to know that the big football game's happening. You know, it's not only about what happened in the past, but you know, you're kind of giving them that this is what's going to happen in the next three months. And then you can always say, for more information, visit our website.
So are we okay with you guys taking this as a next step to come up with some action items?
Yeah, we have some ideas, I think. It's just a matter, I think this helps solidify where the board and I have talked about a little bit and what we've hinted towards might need to happen. So we'll, we'll start preparing some action items and some suggestions to the board on how we can move forward. Obviously, we, as Darren mentioned, we probably need to dedicate a person or an office to handle in our communication so that, and, and the board has picked up on this, right? Even the board members that have kids, like, hey, sometimes I get an email and it's a PDF. Sometimes I get an email and it's written, like, it's a link to a website, sometimes. So we're even, even like, I think what Darren caught on earlier was like, sometimes emails are coming from Dr. Freitas, Mr. Mannan, you know, Ms. Augustine, like, they're coming in different forms, fashions, parents don't know. Is this important? Is this something I need to make sure I open before, you know, tomorrow? So we, we have some work to do and it's things we knew, but this really helped us. So thank you very much, Darren.
It was a pleasure. It was, it was a great, great project.
We're going to continue to break this down a little bit if you don't mind.
Yeah, by all means, any, any questions you have? One last little anecdotal note, I, I forgot to even mention this earlier. Our community did a combined magazine with the village leadership. We were a village. So village leadership and the school district teamed up on a three-times-a-year magazine to highlight community news and school news. I don't know if you have a municipality you could team up? That'd be just one other option as you try to get your story out there. If you, we, we did a combined thing with the, the local library and the village to get out the, the rec opportunities for the summer and the library's summer reading list and, and that was a combined effort that cut the cost in half. So we, we, we split the cost of that magazine. Down the middle, the village wrote half of it, we wrote half the content and teamed up and it was the, it was the community, school combined magazine.
Right. We might be able to do that with our feeders.
Something like that, yeah.
There's three small feeder districts that feed. That might be an idea.
Here for anything you need, just an email away. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, Darren.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Quinn.
Thank you, that was good to hear. Any additional discussion items from anyone for tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll go on to old business. I don't believe we have any life safety items, but we do have a Press Plus policy issue.
Press Plus policy issue. So the board advisory, my advisory press group did meet, press, my advisory council met and reviewed the Press Plus recommendations are included. We did receive a few questions on board policy two colon one hundred regarding the two colon one oh five. There was a question submitted on whether or not we follow the, this recommended strike, striking of the Press Plus recommendation, it's on two colon one hundred, excuse me, on whether or not we eliminate the word business from partner on number two on the gift band and so on the member of conflict of interest. And so I think the recommendation tonight with, I think the board, if, if the board still takes action to approve the Press Plus packet one-ten with the superintendent getting final recommendation from legal counsel on whether or not we should delete that word. I think it's a minor change and I, I would think the board would be okay with trusting me with that. There was one other question submitted about seven colon one eighty, which deals with our bullying policy. That was just approved last year. So you see the board approved, reviewed it and approved it last year with its policy council. Again, we reviewed it, there were no changes or recommendations that we felt that impacted it. And then I made the one change in regards to, where it said schools, I think sometimes it's just because they do it for so many districts, I made that to school, so it's not plural.
Just a typo, I think.
So my recommendation would be the board take action on this Press Packet tonight and just leave with me correcting with the attorney whether or not to take out two colon one hundred, the word business from two colon one hundred.
Sounds reasonable.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Go ahead.
The Board of Education Township High School District two oh eight, Cook County, Illinois approves Press Plus Policy Issue one-ten and the additional policies included as presented in the January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three Board Agenda Packet.
We have a second from Ms. Locke and this is an all in favor? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Okay. The policies are now updated with, pending the one question posed to legal counsel in the future. Resolution regarding board member and employee expenses, this is policy two colon one-two-five E-three.
So we updated this, this is annually read just to kind of set the expectations for reimbursement for travel as well as meal reimbursement. And we did make the minor change of updating the daily meal reimbursement total from sixty to seventy-five dollars, which is in line with the twenty-twenty-two IRS rate depending on regional area. But overall, we're within three dollars. So I think the seventy-five dollar recommendation is on par with what the government recommends.
It's also in line with the state ethics threshold, so that makes sense to me. Any questions or comments from anyone? No? Ms. Gasko?
The Board of Education Township High School District two oh eight, Cook County, Illinois approves the attached resolution to be in compliance with board policies two colon one-two-five, board member compensation expenses and five colon sixty expenses as presented in the January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Second from Mr. Van Horst. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Ms. Slapp?
Yes.
Mr. Bedeck?[1719.26]